If he gives us the go-ahead, we'll get started.
Yeah, Kevin, looking at it, I was waiting for, I see Jeff down there, so it looks like he's reconnected. So I think, I think we're all set here if you want to get the meeting rolling.
Okay, great. Thanks all for joining us this evening. I'd like to start with a roll call of Prescott counselors. So if you could enter by saying yes, that would be Jake Shaw.
Yes.
Craig Green.
Yes.
Doug Seer.
Yes.
Randy Smith.
Yes.
Jeffrey Willett. That's a maybe. Jeff, are you there? Still working with Jeff, alright. Michael Chassie is going to be absent from us tonight, so we have five out of seven counselors present right now with Jeffrey hanging in the wind. So we'll get started with a pledge of allegiance. If you could just put me in saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thanks guys. I'd like to welcome this evening a couple of special guests that we have from New Hampshire. We have with us the chairman of the Board of Selectmen at Epping, Adam Mungia. I hope I didn't hurt that name too bad, Adam. And then the vice chairman, Robert Jordan. And also the town administrator, Mr. Dodge is with us this evening too. And we appreciate them making time as part of our Sister City program to join us this evening. We'll get, we'll get back with those folks here in a little while in our agenda. The first item of business tonight is I'd like to open a public hearing for proposed traffic pattern change to Chapman and Riverside intersections. This was published in our newspaper and our public hearing is this evening. And I'll turn the floor over to our city manager, Martin Puckett.
Thanks Chair. I did receive one email that was just prior to the meeting about reservations, about turning that into a stop sign. And what, what this resident cited as an issue was the amount of traffic that was parking on the long side of the roads, doors opening at traffic and people not using the sidewalk as, as it was intended for. So there was one, there was one negative, one negative for the purpose. And I do know that Dana and Dana Fowler from Public Services and Chris Boyer from the Rec Department is on the line too. And they do have some, if the council wanted to, to hear a little bit of data from them on the program to aid me on turning that into a change.
Excuse me, guys. This is Jeff. Does anybody have a copy on my audio?
Yes.
Great, thank you. This is Chris, can you hear me?
Yes.
I don't know, I assumed Dana was gonna speak up, but he's not. So this is Chris Boyer with the Rec Department. We have been in touch, Dana's been doing most of the legwork, but he's been in touch with the main DOT. And actually, we just got an email from them this afternoon regarding that, that intersection. And the latest way is that way the, where the pedestrian crossing currently is located, the new one. Because it's in that location, we cannot, we wouldn't be permitted to put a stop sign on that northbound part of Chapman Road. The, the, the crosswalk needs to be off of the state, off of the stop area, is how I understood it. I don't know if Dana had any more of that, or Martin, I know you, you got sent that as well.
Yes, we have, this is Dana, so we've received an email from the traffic engineer from main DOT just roughly an hour ago. So he's saying that because we have a flashing beacon at an existing crosswalk, that the MUTCD, which is Uniform Code of Traffic Control Devices, which is used throughout the nation, does not allow a stop sign to be located at that current crosswalk. So he's saying that either we have to move the flashing beacon back further to the south, at least 100 feet, is option one. Or two, leave the stop sign where it is on Riverside Drive. Or three, put the stop sign on the southbound part of Chapman Road. That's, that was a quick update from him, and that's where things stand right now. Is, he has taken it upon himself to, to look at this for us and do the engineering study which is required. And that's the three options that we have right now, but there's been no recommendation.
Okay. Dana, I know we have the crosswalk going directly across the street, right at the intersection with the flashing beacon. If that flashing beacon and that crosswalk were redirected to the opposite side of the Rec Center parking lot, so that it was at the beginning of the parking lot on Chapman Street, so more to the south, leaving the corner unadulterated, so to speak, could, would that make any difference?
That does make a difference. The traffic engineer, Ray DeMerton from DOT, says if we move the flashing beacon at least 100 feet south of the intersection, back where you're talking about Craig, then that would allow the possibility of having a stop sign on the northbound portion of Chapman Street at that intersection.
Okay. And, and if we did that, then probably the next logical step would be put some kind of a fence or barrier, kinda like they do in other areas, we go to, to direct traffic, so you wouldn't walk through there. You, you would direct them to walk around the end of the fence, which would be the 100 feet south to not cross at the corner anymore.
Right, that would have to be looked at because people always want to take the easiest route. And so we'd have to be sure that they didn't cut through the driveway and incur, you know, create a hazard by doing that.
Right.
So again, it's early in the process of looking at it, so we'd have to ensure just what you're talking about, that someone doesn't shortcut that beacon being moved further south.
Okay.
And basically jaywalk.
Okay.
So I think where we're at is, Ray, of course, has lots of work, and he's trying to help us on this because he knows that you have an interest in getting this done as soon as possible. So we'll just continue working with him and try to come to a recommendation for you.
Okay.
Hey Dana, what's the, I guess, basic reason why you can't have that at the stop sign? Is it thinking it's gonna back up traffic more?
I'm sorry, have a, have a stop sign where?
No, why can't it cross at the stop sign?
This manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, the MUTCD, which governs all traffic control, pavement markings, signs in the United States, he has a specific part that says that you cannot have the rectangular rapid flashing beacon, this flashing beacon at a crosswalk. You cannot have the flashing beacon at a stop sign.
But can you just remove the beacon?
You could.
And then you still have your stop sign, so I mean, it's not like people are gonna be blown through.
That's a possibility. You could remove the beacon or, or move it at least 100 feet away from the intersection.
Yeah, I like that idea too, on the other side.
We wouldn't have to get rid of the existing crosswalk, right? Just move, we can have two crosswalks. I mean, if we have them at the stop sign, there's no reason to, you know, we can have a safer crosswalk, I suppose, down, down the way a little bit, but at the three-way, you can still have the regular crosswalk.
I think all you'd have to do, Jake, is remove the flashing beacon. So the MUTCD says you cannot have a stop sign and a flashing beacon at the same intersection. So if you remove the flashing beacon, then you could have the stop sign.
You'd have two crosswalks.
Right.
I think one of the things that we've got going with us this evening is that we are asking for permission or a motion to secure the services of a traffic engineer to conduct the study, which I think all of these comments are great, but I think the study would probably bring to light some of these ideas too, if I'm not mistaken. So this is the public hearing portion of this meeting. And I appreciate the expertise from our, our public works gentlemen. But I think that there's a, there's one public comment to read in here, and I think we should proceed with the survey. If anybody else has anything to discuss, we can do that. Martin, do you have that comment, or would you like me to read it from Ms. Campbell?
I'm sure, I can, I can get it. I did send the council an email that just came through too. So I would like to make comments in regards to the corner of Chapman and Riverside restructuring. I believe it is not a stop sign that will help. I've come down through there, once the park opens up, and you have a hard time getting through because there are people parking on both sides of the road where there's not supposed to be parking. That alone is a hazard on that part of the road. It is not a, it is a sidewalk, not a parking lot. And then, and you have parents leaving their car doors open and talking back and forth across to somebody on the other side of the street. Regarding the new crossing sign, I rarely see people using it. They are crossing anywhere but there. I've seen grownups and children both pop out between parked cars. I myself have multiple people there because they don't pay attention. That's, that is, that's not the only comment I've heard about people parking along the side of the road. He's, has continually had to enforce and patrol, so that is, I have had other people comment on that, the traffic.
Great, thank you. Is there any other public comments to be heard at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I have one more comment. When the memo was written by myself, at that time, we didn't know that we were gonna be able to use the MDOT traffic engineer. So he is willing to do this at no cost to the city, if you'd like to proceed using him.
So what's the, what's the pleasure of the council?
Guys, this is Jeff, and if you can hear me. I'd say we proceed with authorizing Martin to secure the services of a traffic engineer to see what we should do here.
Yeah, and I, and I think it would be the MDOT engineer in this case, instead of the motion that was laid out in front of us. Do I, do I hear a second?
Alright, I'll second that, that's, that's fine.
Motion by Jeff and seconded by Craig to enter a the services of a traffic engineer to conduct the study, the Riverside Drive and Chapman Road intersection. Is there any further discussion by city council? In the hearing, none, I'll ask for a roll call. Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Seer?
Yes.
Mr. Smith? Get your mute button, Randy.
Go on. You're okay now, Randy.
You're, you're on, Randy. Is it a yes vote or a no vote?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Willett?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, also such a vote of six zero, motion carries. The next item for business this evening is another public hearing for a hearing to condemn dangers buildings pursuant to MRSA Title 17, Section 2851. This is a motion basically, or a public hearing that we cannot hold because we're not in public session. So we are basically until June. The properties are owned by Fernand Martin at 23 Howard Street and also 71 Dyer. And another property owned by Roger Pelkey and Robin Pelkey-Ligasse at 9 Allen Street. Martin, do I have this correct, that we're tabling this till next month?
That's correct. We, with, with the COVID-19 issue, the, we, they refuse service from the police department. So we found another way around that, since then they have accepted service. So it is on schedule for the June 3 meeting, so we would just need a motion to do so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move to table.
Thank you, Randy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Randy and seconded by?
Jeff.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. I'm, I'm struggling with my computer here, but I think I finally got all the pictures finally up here without the feedback.
As am I, and I apologize for this Zoom.
Oh, Jeff, you're doing, you're doing, you're doing fine, Jeff. You're doing great. Thank you for joining us. Is there any further discussion from city council? Seeing that on, for a vote, disable motion until the public hearing, excuse me, until next June on the 3rd Wednesday. Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Seer?
Yeah.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Willett?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, motion carries to table six zero. Next item of business is our citizen comments section of the evening. And this is where we are going to ask our guests to, one at a time, basically, inform us on their comments. And tonight in particular, it will be a carryover from last month where we asked Mr. LaFrancois from Northern Light Health, Prescott Air Gold Division to address us. And we're, we're grateful that he is able to share some time with us this evening. And Greg, you have a floor, sir. Go ahead and update us with where you're at on COVID-19 and other health issues for Prescott.
Great. So, can y'all hear me okay?
Yeah.
Great. So, you know, we are, as I kinda indicated last month, we felt as though things were stabilized and we were gonna have sufficient capacity to deal with whatever might come of COVID in the county. And that holds through to this month. There's certainly enough medical capacity here to take any anticipated spike in infections. And that could happen in the county, because we do have congregant living at our nursing homes. And that's really the greatest threat that I would see to, to, to our local status. And, you know, there will be, there will be infections as we have folks traveling into the county, or maybe county citizens traveling out. But all that can be managed with the medical assets, both here, at Cary, also up at Fort Kent and down at Holton. And we feel very confident in our ability to address whatever may come as we move forward. We actually, at the hospital now, are starting to open up appointments again for primary care visits, specialty care visits, all our imaging, MRI, CTs, mammography is another area, so that we're opening. And, and surgical services. So we're bringing those back online, and we're actually gonna do some of the low-complexity services first. And then by June, we anticipate that we will be running all surgical services as we did before in the past. Is this kinda the information that you wanted? I should probably do a temperature check here. Is this?
Yeah, that's great, great, great. Thanks for, for that. And, and I know one of the questions that I had was as of last month's report, in April, you did not have a positive case. And is that still the case right now for Tamik?
At Tam, yeah, at Air Gold, we've not had a positive case. We've done over 200 tests, they've all come back negative. And there's only six in the county. And there's no transmission within the county. It's, those six cases are related to, those were imported cases, if you will.
Got any questions? Go ahead, Randy.
Greg, I have a question. When would you guess that the peak infection rate will occur in Central Roostit? Guess? We're past that. Awesome. It's, it's not, it is, right now, the only, the only threat is, again, if, if it gets into our nursing homes, or if we have visitors into the county that, that bring it with them. I see. Thank you. Absolutely. Greg, that's great news. Wow, thank you. That's great to hear. And you know, this is all due to the citizens of the county made this possible. It, they truly did. This, this social distancing works. And our employers, employers that continue to bring their employees on, like at Pine Land and, and at Penobscot McCrum, they still had to get their work done, but they did it so smart. And they had the precautions in place. And that's, that's the good news story for counties, if you will. We've been, we were fortunate. It's not just because we're so spread out and that we're rural. We are both of those things, but we also took the actions that were recommended seriously. And we're still doing it. As I drive around today, I see people wearing masks. I see them, you know, making it a point to, to not get on top of one another. That's what's gonna keep us safe here, truly. Wow.
I think one of the questions was, in, just in your brick and mortar institution, how many ICU beds do you guys have if you were like maxed out up there?
Seventeen. If I had to expand, we have seventeen available to expand into. And we're gonna leave those in place. So I've got six, on any given day, six takes care of all of the need. But we turned our acute rehab unit into an ICU. And they're, it co-joins our ICU, so it's, it's very easy to manage both of those. And even though we're returning back to normal operations, we are gonna keep that in place, so that we instantly can spread back right into that space if necessary. And I'm guessing probably end of summer before I would give up that space and determine that we won't need it.
One, one final question from me, and then I won't, I don't wanna monopolize all the questions because I know the other guys have a few, but is there any talk about increasing testing rates to the general public beyond just staff and sick people? Are you, you're not encouraging other people to come on by and, and get tested right now? Because you don't wanna use all the supplies up. Is there any way to, is there a path forward about increasing testing?
Well, you know, we could get the supplies. We're in good shape. That's not, that's not the rate-limiting step for us. It is, alls we would do is get a lot more negative test results back. You know, like I said, we've done over 200 with no positives. It's, so, but let me answer the other question, is we are bringing the antibody test on. And the difficult thing about the antibody test is there's no good reason to do it right now. What will we do with those results? And, you know, it just indicates the antibodies are in the system. I apologize for that. But in case the antibodies are in the system, and that could have been from a prior exposure, it could be from a current exposure. But there are some folks who have traveled in the December-January timeframe and were very sick in the early part of the year. They, they assumed it was the flu, but it was something they hadn't experienced before. And they might wanna know, was it, was it COVID back then?
Right.
And so we would be able to answer that question for them. And so that's, I know, we're gonna have the capability of doing it. Cary Medical Center's gonna have it, and I believe Northern Maine Medical Center will also have that. And it's about two weeks away before we can do that.
Open it up to other questions from counselors?
Greg, actually, I'm one of those people. I was in New York and in Washington DC in those timeframes, and then came home and spent the better part of the month sick and, and respiratory infection. So is that something, we just call our, our doctor if you were giving information out, saying, call your doctor and make an appointment, or?
Yeah, that will be, you're gonna see us put the information out, how to access that test.
Right.
And all likely to be at the walking clinic.
Okay.
And it's a simple lab draw, we have all the supplies. What we've done is ALI, which is our lab down in Bangor, they have to get certified for that test, which is happening right now. And they anticipate by mid-May, they'll have it.
Great.
Yep.
Many, anybody else? Any other counselors? Again, Greg, I really appreciate everything that, that you've done. And we, I live on the same street that your office is, and I see the, the support from the community on Wednesday nights. It's really heartening to see a lot of the support for healthcare workers. We really appreciate everything you guys have done and are continuing to do. And I agree with you, I think the social distancing measures of, everybody is aware of them, they're educated to them, and I don't think it's gonna go away soon, and I, I hope this trend continues for all of us here in Prescott.
Yeah, this is a great reason to live in the county, I tell you. And, and actually, I'm on my way out to go see those folks lining up to, to thank our staff. That is a wonderful thing the community is doing for our, our staff. I can't tell you how grateful I am for that. So, well, I appreciate the time talking with you. And of course, you don't have to wait for these meetings. If any of y'all have any of these questions, don't be afraid to reach out to me.
I, I thank you for your access, sir. We really appreciate it. It's, it's, it's very well, well noted by our, our group, and that, and that the office goes both ways. Don't wait for these meetings, you get anything for us, let us know, sir.
I'll do it. Thank you.
The next citizen comment tonight, I see we have our distinguished senator from Holton, Maine, that represents our district, Mr. Michael Carpenter. And thank you very much, sir, for taking time to join our Zoom meeting this evening. And I guess, Michael, we'd like you to start with your own perception of things that are going on and, and also try to update us with what is going on or not going on in Augusta right now, as far as COVID-19's concerned. You gotta unmute your mic there.
There you go. Thanks to Martin and the council for having me. As far as the legislature, we haven't been in the, in Augusta since the middle of March, in part because, mostly because of the COVID situation. I don't have any special insights in terms of where things are going. I talk to people in Augusta daily. I know there are a lot of people down there working hard to try to figure out how to mesh the science with the economics. Some of the parts of the state, as you know, are in dire straits in terms of the number of cases. I appreciate what Greg said, I think he's absolutely right. I had doubts at the beginning that folks in the county would, because we're so far removed, would feel that they needed to cover up and do the social distancing. They absolutely have, every place I go, and I go to Prescott Court once in a while, still. So hats off to all the folks in the county who've done that. There's some talk that perhaps there will be a phased modification, if you will, of the opening order of the governor of last week. I hear talk, it's only talk at this point, that they might release some of the counties, or not release them, but, but open them up a little more broadly, if you will, than has been so far. I mean, the problem with opening up, you know, is that sitting on our border in Massachusetts and New York, the first and third highest infection rates in the country, those folks come up here on a, on a good year, and they will flood up here if they, if they think there's an opportunity. So, I mean, I, I appreciate the So, I mean, I, I, I appreciate the, the difficulty and the complexity. I just got put on this afternoon on a, some sort of a reopening committee. I'm not even quite sure what it's involved, but the county will have a voice at least. And I have some views about reopening. I have a business in Bar Harbor. It's supposed to open Memorial Day weekend, but it's not opening. I can tell you that. So I'll leave it open to questions. I think the other big issue that the council needs to think about is when this calms down and when the legislature does go back into session, probably later this year, but certainly in the year upcoming, there are going to have to be some serious readjustments to the budget. The budget situation when we left Augusta was quite robust. We had put over $275 million is in, is in the rainy day fund, the most amount of money that's ever been there. And that is still there, contrary to some of the stuff you see on social media about it being all spent. That is absolutely not true. I believe that both Representative McCray and Representative Stewart, who are on this call, will agree with that. That's going to be unfortunately a drop in the bucket when this thing reopens. If we don't get some dollars from the feds in the next package that comes out of Washington, we're going to be hurting. We're going to be hurting anyway. And that deals with revenue sharing. It deals with education costs. All of those costs that the state helps with when it comes to municipal budgets are going to be in tough shape. So somebody's going to have their work cut out for them. I'll stop talking and answer any questions you might have.
I, I guess the, the only thing, Mike, the information you're going to be working on about possibly changing some of the phases or whatever may be happening. Of course, we certainly want to be smart about it and we certainly don't want to endanger anyone. But you know, my concern is with some of the businesses that are deemed non-essential that, you know, probably could use some of the same measures the essential businesses are using and, and to get them open and to get some revenue flowing into them. Because privately, a lot of them have been speaking with us and we know that there's some severe financial problems there because of money not flowing from the feds as easily as we hoped it could come. So I guess I would encourage you with that to try to, you know, see what pressure you could put to maybe allow them some of the same types of things that the essential businesses are doing.
Well, and I think that's right. And I think in order to do that, the people in Augusta have to hear what a good job folks, at least up here and the other places I go around the state, have done social distancing and wearing a mask. I don't go to, I don't go into a facility or a public space now without the mask. I try very careful to keep the, the distancing and all that, be respectful to other people. So I think one of the things that I'm glad about as far as the, being on this committee that I was appointed to today would be that I can pass the word down that, you know, we did well in Roostit County. And I think that has a lot to do with the fact that we only had six cases. So to get that word down there. And, and some of the opening rules don't make much sense. You can play golf, but you can't play, you can't get on the practice tee. I don't play golf, so it doesn't hurt me. Walmart selling clothing, but margins can't. There are some inconsistencies. And my hope is, is I can take this information back to Augusta and maybe make some changes.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I won't see you at the fair.
Right.
Senator, would you have any guidance, early guidance or best guesses as to much, how much revenue sharing might be down? Or, I mean, Moody's is predicting 30 to 50% down numbers. I've heard some early estimates at 30% down, you know. You're right, we're going to have our work cut out for us, both you, the folks in Augusta and all the municipal governments as well. What, what would your, what would your best, what's your gut feel right now? You know, we're, no one's listening right now. It's just us.
I wouldn't think that, I wouldn't think that 30% would be out of the, out of the realm of possibility. I'll defer to my other two legislature friends here. None of us are on the appropriations committee and we haven't necessarily seen the estimates, but I wouldn't be at all surprised if we're down that much. And that's, you know, that means you're going to have to take down every program or we're going to take down a lot of programs.
No, I sent, this is Trey. I can hold up if you want. I sent around a, the latest March revenues, financials earlier. If you want, Kevin, we can wait and talk about that when you get to David and I. If you, it's up to you guys, whenever you want to talk about it.
Right. Great. Great. Trey, thanks and appreciate you joining us too this evening. Senator Carpenter, is there anything else you want to close with or has anybody else got anything for, for Michael? And if, if not, then you're, you're welcome to hang around, Mike, but.
I can help with the rest of the guys when they, when they chime in. So I'll hang around for a bit.
Great. Thank you very much, sir. Trey, go ahead. Unmute your mic and thank you for joining us this evening. What's your perspective as to what's happening or not happening in Augusta? And, and if you want to start working with those, those numbers there eventually, yeah, we'd, we'd love to chat with you about them because we, we need to figure something out in the future.
Yep, sure. First of all, thanks for having me. Appreciate it a lot. It's good to see you all, even though it's from a distance. Hope you're all doing well and condolences to the Chassis family, obviously on their huge loss this last week. It's a blow to the community. So heart goes out to them. Let me sort of take it from a high level, I guess, from my perspective on what we're seeing. And then I can drill in afterwards on some of the, the financials and whatnot that I sent around earlier. And Martin, did you have a chance to send that to everybody that's on the council? Okay, great. So first off, you know, I, I agree 100% with what Greg said in terms of the, the reason that things are faring really well up in the county. And if you look at the maps too, there isn't a single active case in Piscatawess County. There isn't a single active case in Washington County. And I think it's because the folks have, have taken those guidelines seriously. You know, wearing masks and maintaining social distancing. And that's going to pay dividends because I think, you know, as, as Senator Carpenter alluded to, when the, the plan does roll out, we're going to be able to be ahead of that curve as, as, as opposed to the rest of the state. And at least I hope that that's what happens. It's unclear exactly what direction that's going to go in, but I think that the data supports that we can do a different type of opening, either based on region or, or something to that effect. You know, there's a really interesting study too that just came out from MIT a couple of days ago that suggests that you can actually achieve, it's, it's sort of, we've been hearing a lot about the false economy, that you either have to pick the, the health of Mayners or the economy. And there's a lot of data out there, the, the study compiled that says that that's just not true. You can achieve both goals at the same time, but by doing it in a smart way and then taking those guidelines seriously, like we've proven that we can do up here. So looking at things like separating vulnerable populations from the rest of the, the at-risk folks. But at the same time, letting those populations that aren't vulnerable get back to work and do it in a way that is safe and that is going to be incorporating those healthy guidelines to mitigate the spread, but at the same time, lower the, the risks to the public. And in that project, I'm happy to share that study as well with folks. But it, it reduced both the total hit to our GDP, which is projected at least as of this week, to be about 25% down to about half that. And it also reduced the amount of lives that are estimated to be lost because of COVID based on their models by about half as well. So that's a really promising study. I'm sure that that'll be kicked around and incorporated in the work that continues to go on in Augusta and some really good news, frankly. The AP, your Roostit Partnership, I have to give a plug to those folks. They reached out to the DECD Commissioner and basically compile, compile their sort of interpretation of what the guidelines were as far as the executive orders is concerned. And then put, based on the input from their folks in the private sector up in Roostit County, their sort of scaled back recommendations. And at least if nothing else, give some sort of a template to look at. So that might be a group that's worth reaching out to as well for folks on the county and certainly Senator Carpenter as well and the, the commission that he serves on. Finally, I'll say that DOL is being, it's, it's a big mess right now. I get two calls lately. The first call is, oh, I shouldn't say that, three types of calls. The first one is just general frustration. Folks don't want to wear a mask, but they're going to anyway, that sort of thing. The second call is in regards to business. So businesses that are basically on the verge of closing down and they're trying to figure out what to do and looking for guidance and where can they go for resources. The third type of call is because somebody applied, somebody that was working and then the government basically said that they can't work anymore because of the health risk. And now they can't get into DOL to get their unemployment benefits. And so today, the, the DOL Commissioner was in front of the Labor Committee and I spent four hours today listening to the back and forth between the Commissioner and the legislature. Not a lot was learned in that regard outside of what was already sort of put out in, in front of the press as far as unemployment goes. I think it's going to be a very slow fix. I think that we're going to have a lot of lessons learned at the end of this thing. But in terms of what we can do right now for a sudden fix, I don't see a lot of promise there. So that's one, I think that's going to continue to be a rub for a lot of folks. And I'm sure that folks on the council are probably getting those sort of phone calls too. I know it's frustrating, but you know, just continue to, you know, keep the pressure on, on the folks at DOL and, and continue to make the phone calls, continue to send the emails, that sort of thing. We can, as legislators, I'm sure both Mike and Dave have been doing this as well, redirecting folks to various channels in state government to try to get them some sort of direct contact with an actual human being. Because when they've been on the phone for three hours on hold, that's not cutting it for them anymore, particularly when some of the constituents have reached out to me and been waiting for seven weeks for, just to get a response. So that's sort of the high level, where things are at, at least from what my days have been looking like, what I've been dealing with. As far as revenue sharing goes, there's a, there was a White House phone call today that was very telling in terms of what states can do with the money that they've already received from the COVID Assistance and the CARES Act. And Maine, as you all know, received $1.25 billion from that. But it was sort of hazy as to what we can actually do with that money. The big one that you all care about is obviously revenue sharing. Revenue sharing and, and the good, it's good news. So that's good. That, that money will be able to be redirected to municipalities. It's unclear to what extent, but there will be at least some relief there. If you want to turn to the attachment that I sent around, I don't know if you all have that in front of you. I wrote all over mine, but just give a thumbs up if you have that in front of you. It looks, there's, there's six pages and it looks, they're like spreadsheets. I'll just breeze through it real quick and just hit the high points. So on the first page, on what says Exhibit 1, the top line is what your sales and use tax revenue is. Now bear in mind that this is from March. So in March is when we started to experience the real crisis in earnest, at least in Maine and the stay-at-home wars. We, we haven't really seen what it looks like yet, but you start to see a drop in about 1% of what was anticipated in terms of sales tax. That's not shocking. I think the April numbers will be much more telling. And, and as folks have alluded to before, the, the more time goes on, the more we're going to know about where we are financially. But what I will say is that as, if you go down to the notes and you can see the one, two, third line from the bottom, transfer to municipal revenue sharing. So that's the line that you want to look at. Prior to this, and this is a little bit of good news, prior to this, we were up 16.2% over what our budget should have been for revenue sharing. So we were on the right track. And then the world came to an end and now all of a sudden, you know, every, everything's up in the air. We're not really sure what the numbers are going to be. But prior to that, we were cushioning that account pretty well. If you go a little bit below that, down to where it says notes and note one, it talks about the transfer 4.6 million and 8.3 million year-to-date. And so that's what we're talking about in terms of revenue sharing and the account that you actually care about. If you go to the next, what should be the next one, it says Exhibit 2, but it's in Roman italic, so it looks like 11. But that's the one you want to be looking at. And this is a year-to-year comparison with 2019 financials and then where we are today. So this is a pretty telling one because it reflects what we did in the legislature last year. So again, top line, our sales, our sales revenue is up year-over-year. That's good. We're at 6.1% over what we were last year. And again, this is when things were still rocking and rolling prior to the shutdowns. And then if you go down, again, third line from the bottom and transferred to municipal revenue sharing, go all the way over to fiscal year-to-date, you can see the increase of where we were and what our variance is. And we're up 30 million, 30.7 million in, in that account because of the moves that the legislature made up to that point. So where I'm going with this is that there is already a significant chunk of money that is there and will now have the CARES Act funding that will be added into that fund as well. So I, I think one of the things that we want to, what we as in state government want to avoid at all costs, if possible, are any sort of tax increase, particularly at the local level. So I feel optimistic that we'll be able to dodge that to a fairly good extent based on what we have for numbers so far, based on the guidance we're getting from the White House and on down. And based on just sort of the general sentiment, at least in this legislature, towards property tax relief. I know that all four caucuses were, were committed to that in the previous budget. So with that, I'll stop talking and I know I covered a wide gamut of information there. So.
Representative Stewart, thank you so much. Those are the types of things I think we were kind of looking for some, you know, those numbers, you know, you just don't pick up the BDN and, and read those things. And some of that's hot off the press and I'm sure Martin has already put those emails out to us, but most of us haven't read them before tonight's meeting. So we'll, we'll get the opportunity to digest what you've sent us via City Manager's Office. If there's anything else that a counselor would like to ask Representative Stewart, any other questions or comments? Go ahead. I think Trey, you did just an outstanding job again. Once again, I appreciate you. Been in front of us before and you always have the, the intelligence answers or you go find the answers and, and as well as your, your counterparts. And thank you for doing that again this evening. So that we don't run right out of time, I, I know that David McCray's here, our representative also. And David, thank you for joining us this evening, sir. Do you have the opportunity to give us your perspective or, and what you feel in addition to what your, your two co-conspirators have said here as well?
Co-conspirators. Yeah. Well, the, the good part of coming in last is Greg and Mike and Trey have, have pretty much stolen the thunder that I had and added some things that I didn't know. So I was glad to hear those. The one thing that I have as a, as a very positive comment is, you know, we like to think of the county as rugged individualists and we're going to do things our way. And by God, nobody's going to tell us what to do. And I look around and I am so proud of the people that I see that, you know, like Mike said, like Trey said, and Greg, people have really responded. They don't like it, but what's there to like? It's not something that anybody can like. So, so I'm kind of the, the cheerleader looking at, at, at how well we've done. I really didn't expect it would go this well. I have had a few people contact me and really sound off that they just can't take it anymore. They're, they're not going to pay any attention to anything. Then I see them downtown and they get their mask on and they're staying in their car. So I guess the, the frustration is there. And I guess we all are a little bit short on it, especially when, 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 when everybody was required to wear a mask to win a grocery store or something like that. Or when they first had to start taking a cart or they couldn't come in. I know people that worked there took, took quite a bit of flak. I am concerned about the rural parts of the, the state. We have done a good job. We're, we only have, we have six confirmed cases and, and, and no deaths. That's great. Thank God. We are rural. We are isolated. So I, everything I'm hearing, I think that there's a strong likelihood that, that we will start opening up a little more in the rural parts of the state. I sure hope so. But the danger there is, is that if, if a golf course opens in Prescott, we'll say, I know golfers. I play a little, not a lot. I used to play a lot. But I know golfers that would travel from Portland just to come to Prescott to play golf for one day. So I'm, I'm a little concerned about that. But I think we're paying attention to the, to the scientists, the, the medical people. And, and I think we're going to be smart about the way we gradually open up. I know people that want to say, open it all up. We can't stand this. And if a few people, if a few, few people die, that's too bad. Well, that is just, that's nuts. So I, I think that's really about all I had to say. I don't have any new information that, that hasn't already been expressed by, by Greg, Mike and Trey. So.
You know, Representative McCray, if, if I may start this, and, and I know we're going to keep this to about five more minutes and then move on with our agenda, but when you say that, you know, the rural areas should open up and you made the example about the golfer coming from Portland. We already have some guidelines and rules in place about playing on the golf course, you know, about not touching the, the cup, about keeping six feet apart, having locker rooms closed. We've got the guidelines. Let's, let's, if, if Prescott opens or these other places open, they'll let them police themselves. I think they will do a good job and, and, and again, I think the area deserves a phased reopening. We have the governor's strategy. I'm sensitive to, to the restaurants, only because, not because I, I like to frequent them, which I do, but I am sensitive to the employees that are depending on the single wage. In a lot of places, that's their only income is working in those restaurants and they've been patient. They've gone eight weeks, nine weeks. They got a few more to go until June 1, but if there's any way we can accelerate that forward for rustic, I think you, you fellers would earn a real pat on the back. I think would make a real emotional difference and I think would make a, a lot of difference in people's paychecks. So that's, that's my only comments. I, I know we're, we're all we're anxious to see this time move forward. But if there's anything you folks can do in your committee meetings and you're talking about phased openings and maybe showing some deference to rural Maine, I think the restaurants are in there, in there. Those folks have already got a pretty good idea how they're going to run their shows. How they're going to go 50%, how they're going to space people out six, six feet away, how their employees are going to wear masks, how they're going to sanitize places when people leave. I, I think, I think they're smart enough to do it and if you guys can enable them to go, I think it would be a lot of good points for that.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I, I agree totally. I got a, I, I was involved in a, in a, in a texting thread yesterday and it was long with those, there were four points that I thought, wow, that makes really good sense. People are in this and they're trying to do it legitimately and intelligently. Opening hotels up with a certain percentage, limit the cleaning, only doing it when the unit empties at the end of the stay, dialed out outside the door, limit dining out, but to selling packages with meals involved that could already be there. That type of thing, planning ahead, shopping with masks only, you know, just things that people are being innovative. And that whole thing went on and I thought, wow, I wouldn't have thought of that. So I think there are real smart people out there that are making, making a lot of sense and making suggestions to the people that are going to, well, like on Mike's committee. There are things that people are thinking outside the box and doing it in a good way. So so I'm encouraged that way too.
Any, anybody else have any comments?
No, thank you to everyone that spent time with us.
It's been a pleasure.
Anytime. Take care, guys.
Thanks for having us.
Great, great. Thank you. So we'll move on to our consent agenda this evening and the, the item three is to approve the minutes from April 1, 2020. I'm sure you've got an opportunity to see that. Is there any other discussion or, but I'd like a, a motion, please?
Well, actually I would make the motion to approve the minutes and the warrants, item three and four.
So it's been moved by Craig and seconded by Jeff to approve the minutes from April 1st, 2020 and approve the warrants 12 through 16 totaling $1,319,390.27. Seeing no hands up or other discussion, all those in favor, it'd be Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Seer?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Willat?
Yes.
Miss, and the chair votes yes also, so motion passes 6-0. Next item of business is our old business and that is our goal setting. Just to review and for the sake of the folks in New Hampshire, several years ago, we asked our staff and our council to try to give some guidance to our municipal leaders to, and the department chairs as to what we'd like to see accomplished in the near term, meaning the, the next 12 months. So we established a goal-setting deal where people would basically brainstorm ideas and we have about 60 items that we brainstormed so far this year and now we're trying to whittle that down to about 10 or 12 actionable items. It was real successful last year. It led to a number of, of great developments and we're trying to duplicate that again this year. So Martin, if, if you want to chime in, give me a chance to rest my voice, let's take us where we are right now.
So council, we still have some, some that have not responded to the survey. I don't know who those are, but they, we still are, I think, three or four votes away from being full. And I see one hand up. Thanks for the odyssey. But what I was happy to see that there's a grouping on here. It's not as tight as it was in years past. And I, I'm, usually we have more of a consensus at this point onto either a top 10 or top 15 type goal and I, I blame that on not being able to meet as a group frankly. And that's definitely, in the years past, we've had some great team effort between the department heads and the council developing these goals together and coming up with smatch and items. So the way I look at this, I see a lot of, a lot of effort that the council's still interested in, in towards economic development, developing more of a social presence on social media and redoing our website. So I see a lot of effort that we can put towards that as, as department heads and as city manager to, to move that forward. There were a lot of ones on here unfortunately that did not make the list, but I think I, again, it goes, I think, with the council looking at growing the economy and changing from some of the, the things that we have completed in the, in the past frame. I did see City Hall is still an interest on here, GIS and economic revitalization is, is, is a key. That's in a lot of the smaller items too. So I could take some of these theoretically and combine these underneath economic development and I think that they would, they would combine. I know we're going to, I don't see a reason why we can't meet as a group in next month in June. The limits are up to 50, reassured what I, what we heard today from Mr. LaFrancois. I know there's, still might be some individuals that may not attend a public meeting, but I'm wondering if now that we know where the council's heading, we can have a nice roundtable with department heads and with counselors at the June meeting to really finalize this list.
Yeah, I'll, I'll throw myself in front of the bus. I did not get my, my survey completed and I think that when I look at the first page, you know, from 23% on up to 46% responses, basically the top 10, a lot, you know, I know Galen and his group have done a terrific job, you know, vetting out all those ideas and you know, that, that's definitely the strong point. Obviously City Hall remodel is another strong point. I'm surprised that the sidewalk and downtown stuff didn't really hit a number, or at least I might have missed it. But if, if anybody, unless other people feel strongly, maybe we give this survey another five days, get it into Martin's office and then have him roll that thing forward to us for the June meeting. If, if that's okay. Randy, what do you think?
I think that's a good idea.
I agree. That's a good idea too. I've totally dropped the ball on completing the survey and would definitely be looking forward to having in-person meetings again.
Yeah, I, I actually did get the survey done, which I did the first day I got it, which is a total unbelieve to me because normally that never happens. Why put off, you know, till tomorrow? You do today. Well, I'm just the opposite. So but I, I think the thing is, as I looked at some of the items and the thing that really kind of stood out to me is there are some items on here that most certainly are major impetus type projects that, that we do need our support, the, the support of the departments and Martin's support. And then there's some other things like you mentioned about the sidewalk and such that, that can be a, a kind of a, a quick thing too. So I, I guess, you know, my thought would be these things that can be combined, we, you know, we, we combine them as you mentioned, but not to, you know, say that some of these other things are not at all unimportant, especially if they're minor in nature, you know, that, that it may be just a, a committee type thing that gets it done. It's not a major effort of a whole department.
Sure. I mean, one of the things that we did last year was we were, we were focusing on these things to guide us on a macro level, but drilling down on the, on this, the department stuff and let those guys manage those, those businesses and departments. They, they did a terrific job basically pursuing those and getting results and, and coming back and saying, hey, this is what we got done. And, and we're not saying that none of them are, we're not minimizing those, which we're just thinking as a group, what we want to try to see reported on monthly or every other month and, and what we're trying to task Martin with. And so it gives him a track to run on and it gives us a track to run on. So we're not asking questions saying, you know, hey, what about let's say the T-hanger project, for instance, up at the airport. He was like, well, I didn't know that was a big priority. Well, that's what goal-setting is, is establish the priority. So we could, we could do this for another five days and, and get these results back to Martin next week so he can have something to act on next month. You know, it's, it's June already. So if that, if that's the will of you folks, that's just, that's what I'd like to see us do.
Yeah.
Hey, go ahead Jake.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Anybody else? Don't see them there. Okay. Now let's move on to the next item then, and that is under new business. I'm not sure if Dana's still around or if Martin wants to start off on the paving account transfer.
I'll start off and have Dana fill in, but Dana and I did take a look at the, the bid, the bid results and unfortunately it was the exact opposite I was hoping in with the oil prices down with, it sounded like some people are giving away oil. The, the paving prices were higher. So the long and the short of it is, is what Dana's recommendation is to ship some money from the chip ceiling budget that was a little bit lower than anticipated into the paving budget. It's an amount of $10,000 is what, what he's looking to do to help out with the paving budget. They're in separate line items, so it would require council. It's something a city manager I can't do.
Okay.
Is, is Dana there?
I am still here. Basically, chip seal came in lower than budgeted and paving came in higher. And we'd like to transfer the unused chip seal funds over into the reserve account to be used for paving.
Dana, let me just ask a question and maybe you don't have the answer and I'm sorry to blindside you. What's our total paving budget per year?
Typical year would be about 400, 450,000, but this year it's going to be over 500,000 because we're doing some of the state aid roads and sharing the cost with MDOT.
Well, this is the cool thing about having our folks from Epping with us tonight. I'm just kind of curious what Greg or, or Adam would say. What's, what's your paving budget down at Epping?
It's interesting that you asked that question because it was just crossing my mind. It's about the same as yours, about 450, 5 grand. Greg?
$650,000. 650.
Yeah, yeah, that's a, you know, we find, well, I think we're going to find as we roll forward on this collaboration that many, many of our items are so, so similar and, and, you know, to me, that's an excellent kind of gut check as to what our, our winters are a bit more harsh. I think our roads take a bit more of a beating, but you know, we're also doing the same tug and pull with our state government that you are, that you've got your own municipal share and then you're, you're waiting for the state to do their own thing. And you know, that's, I appreciate you sharing us with that, those numbers. Thanks. Any other discussion by City Council? Craig?
No, I, I just, I'd make the motion if you want me to.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd move that we approve transfer 10,000 from the asphalt account 0090904 to the street overlay account, 098-01.
Suck it.
There's a motion by Craig and seconded by Randy. Is there any further discussion? Singing on color roll, Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Seer?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Willat?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes also, so motion passes 6-0. Next item of business is assessing update and Martin, you can start that and I don't, not sure if Lewis is here or not. Martin, you're muted. Martin, you're muted.
Thanks for the reminder. I appreciate it. So I don't go on for a long time. My, my hat's off to Lewis. He's really been doing an excellent job during this trying time with balancing out increasing the number that we actually provide services to. To give a little background for our Epping friends is that we, we had a conversation with other municipalities in the county to, we understood that there was a shortage of us tax assessors. So the, the county was successful in getting a, a grant to implement regional assessing. And with our, with our assessing department and with the, with the help of Lewis, he was actually able to to put together a plan and implement it. And I, I see Lewis is on here. Lewis, maybe you could provide us a little of the, the, the details of that.
Sure. Thank you, council, and I appreciate your time. I did do a memo and, and the regional thing is the second bullet down there. We have, we're, we're in the thick of it now. We went out, presented to the different towns what we want to offer and what we could do for them and we, we picked up 13. So at this point, like I say, we're in the thick of it. We've done all the deed processing and this COVID issue has actually not helped us, but it's, it's kept us, we've been able to do things from home in processing those deeds and, and we have not fallen behind in that area. So we're sitting pretty good that way. We have gotten some help from two other assessors, the lady who does Holton and also the, the gal who does Mapleton has helped us. So between Maria, Dana and I and those two, we've made some real good progress. Field work is next and we have our hands full for the next month, getting that all covered. But I think come, come late June, early July, we'll have everybody in, in good shape there. So I can only say so far it seems to be going very well and I think that it'll continue on with those after this grant money dries up.
Lewis, what, in one of your reports, you were talking about Airbnbs. You want to go into that a little bit and stuff, just a minute?
Yeah, and that was the first bullet in that memo. I, of course, I wrote that before things really got heavy here, but we have been dealing with the fact that the Airbnbs have come into the town. We've got over 12 of them now operating and they've escaped the, the personal property assessment. And they are taking money from our other hotels and motels that are paying a good property tax. All, all in the tune of, on a value of, of three quarters of a million dollars. So an inequity has, has arisen and we, we feel that we need to go after those as well, just to, just to even that playing field again. And we want to include other rental units as well. They've, they've escaped being assessed for their personal property here in the city and, and we should correct that. I am also very interested if you have any thoughts. I am also very interested if you have any thoughts on that.
Jeffrey, you got anything?
Okay. A question for you, Louis. In the case of an Airbnb, and not that I'm that familiar, if they have a house that's dedicated, say, to Airbnb, and that's the only thing they use the house for, then would the furnishings of the house come under this?
That's absolutely what we're talking about. In the hotels, motels, the beds, the dressers, the mirrors, the coffee pots, everything that's in those rooms is assessed. And we're treating, we're going to treat them the same as as a hotel room, is what it goes down to.
Yep. That's fair. Yep.
I'm curious, Louis, if you happen to know, what kind of size of operation are we looking at up in the county for Airbnbs and that type of thing?
The the beauty is there, because of the nature of their business being internet based, they're also very easy to trace. And we know that there's about a dozen of them here in the city. I would say almost half are owned by one person. And the rest are scattered out across the field. But it's not going to be a major undertaking there. But the other rental units, we've got several that are competing with the hotels on short term. And and we need to we need to pick those up as well.
Okay. Randy, you got any discussion there? Randy?
Sounds good.
Any any other counselors? I've got a question for Greg Dodge down there at Epping and stuff. Do you folks do your own assessing down there, Greg? Or do you do regional assessing?
We have, we contract out our assessing ultimately by statute, the selectmen are the assessors. But we we contract out our property, property assessments and utilities are done separately by another company.
Great. Interesting, interesting insight. Louis, go ahead.
Well, I had the same question because I have visited your website and, you know, we were kind of encouraged to contact our counterparts in your town. But I think you answered my question is where's your assessor? I assume that's a firm that has several people that come come visit?
Yes. Well, we have one gentleman who's in mostly on Mondays, but with the COVID-19, it's been very sporadic. I can certainly get you in touch with our assessor if you need to. That's not a problem.
I think I think that's that's great. You know, Louis, we appreciate, we a couple months ago, you were busy and out and about. And we were kind of wondering how the new assessing, regional assessing was going. So we put this on the agenda for you to give us an update. And, you know, if you've got something you want to add, don't wait for us to put it on the agenda, you know, tell me or Martin and we'll get it on. But we'd like to hear how it's going. And I hope it builds into the future. I think the other towns have definitely embraced this so far.
Yeah, I agree. And so far, I've got nothing for negative feedback. But again, we haven't delivered the final product yet, but we are definitely in the thick of it. And I feel comfortable that we're on schedule and on track to to make it happen as we need to. So the third item I had on there was just a brief one on the commitment. As the governor's first order, we are required to take all applications right up until commitment date, or if she happens in the executive order, we can, it's three days after that final date. So at this point, we know we're going to be accepting applications right up to commitment. Aside from that, we seem to be status quo. You guys have touched on it. We're going to need the numbers, the revenue sharing, the education subsidy, and those things. We're going to need those. So when we get to that point, hopefully, something else has come along to help us there.
Again, Greg, down there at Epping, have you folks tried to put your arms around where you what's your crystal ball looking like in the state of New Hampshire? I know it's a difficult question.
Right now, the town of Epping is holding its own. Other communities are worse off than we are. But unfortunately, our finance director just had her father just passed away. She's been out. But we are tracking that closely. And right now, we seem to be doing fairly well. Or okay, I should say. Okay.
You feel that you might be a flat budget?
I think so. I think so.
Good for you. That Martin, you've got any comments about that you think will be flat?
It's interesting to ask. We talked with, I've been talking with Brad for about a month now about what what to use for projections. And we've been following what other towns have been doing throughout the state. And it's interesting to hear Mr. Dodge and what's happening across the border, too. What what we've heard some other towns that rely so heavily on revenue sharing is that they're expecting a larger hit. What really balances out is the luckily, we have the airport that's actually generating revenue and the industrial council. So those are two big departments that we've had to rely on. So today, during the phone call with department heads, we really looked at the estimates and putting putting some numbers to that. So I did ask the department heads to take a look at their budgets and see what they could make for reductions. Brad has some preliminary figures. He's looking at around 300,000, give or take, in reductions that we're that we're looking at. Luckily, we have been tracking, we follow monthly what our what our expenditures are. So we think that we can make up that difference without much, much pain. And so I do hope that when it comes time for commitment, who knows when that will be. We're 48% of the municipality, the city is 48% of the tax. So the majority of that is SAB one and a small portion is the county. So until we know what the school's doing and what we're going to actually get for revenue sharing, it's going to be difficult to get an accurate figure at this time. But we're we're closely monitoring. I think we're getting close to what we make for various revenue accounts and be ready to deliver to the council what those reductions should, so we can have a balanced budget. I want to avoid taxes for the taxpayers as much as possible.
If I just ask one question of Martin, have you received any COVID-19 funds from DC yet? The CARES Act funds or anything like that?
Unfortunately, in Maine, they went to the large municipalities. So those 100,000 and higher, the only funds that we that are related to that are for the airport. And so those are about a million dollars that that we're going to receive. But there is the congressional delegation did send out the letter, a copy of the letter today to urging for those funds to go to the small municipality. So I remain hopeful, but until I see it, I I'm not going to put it in the budget.
I did see Greg on your Monday meeting there that you guys got about 8800 bucks, right?
Yes. And that's pretty much for the fire department and the COVID-19 related cases. And we're going to have a shortfall in revenue in the ambulance service anyway, because the chief tells you that people just don't want to go to the hospital now. They're afraid to go. And a lot of our signups for no transport. So our revenues will be down in that respect.
I think we're nearing the end of the meeting and I do want to open it up to Bob, Adam and Greg. And just to show you on your Zoom meeting, you have Darrell, please our chief of fire, our chief. Louis, of course, is our assessor. Kim Smith's our public relations officer. We have Sonia Eiler, great lady that runs our library, been there for many, many, many years, does a fantastic job there. We also have our airport director there, that distinguished looking gentleman with a lack of hair there. He's well, so we had Dana Fowler is off camera right now. He's our public works director. And and the reason why I'm going around like this, as well as our rec center person, Chris Bowyer is fantastic guy. We wanted to make sure that your counterparts feel like they can contact us and our counterparts directly, like the fire chief talk to the fire chief, the assessor talk to the assessor. We really want to try to to move forward on this collaborative effort. And it's my idea is to start with some sort of benchmarking and looking at numbers and and stuff. And it's, it's, I think it's interesting that the numbers somewhat are the same. But I think that both communities can benefit in the long run by maybe taking best practices from each community. And 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 it starts tonight with leadership. It starts with me and Adam. It starts with Martin and Greg and your council, your selectmen and our council. And this is, you know, not we have to get together every month, but I I think during the COVID crisis, we've got a lot on our plates. And we also have a little time on our hands. And maybe, you know, how do, how are you guys reacting to COVID? And maybe you want to figure out what Prescott's doing. And I think you're going to find that we're all in the same game and we're facing the same issues. And maybe you guys have some answers that would help us in this first. So Greg, that's, that's, what's your comments to that? What do you say?
I agree 100%. I mean, to be able to bounce off ideas of other communities such as yours and each other's counterparts is very helpful. We all have the same problem, every different level. So it's good to have that that one in one contact. I will tell you that as we signed off on the Sister City agreement, we seemed to be going along really great. And then all of a sudden, we hit the brick wall, the COVID wall. And ever since COVID-19 has come in, I mean, everyone's gone to a different mode. So it's unfortunate, but everyone's lifestyle has changed, as we all know. But certainly, we do want to reach out to our counterparts in Prescott, Maine, and certainly have that one on contact and share ideas. It's a great way of doing business.
Thank you. Adam, I'd love to hear from you.
I'd like to echo what Greg said. I had a very interesting perspective on the whole Sister City thing. I've already learned at least seven things. I take notes as I as I go along, just attending this meeting tonight. I think it's going to be very beneficial, especially right now. It's a critical time.
Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, actually, thank you, Chairman Freeman. I appreciate that. I appreciate you in inviting us into the meeting this evening. It, you know, I feel like I'm sitting on one of my own meetings because it's, I've always considered Prescott as Sister City for myself and my wife anyway, because we used own property on Chapman Road out by Arnold Brook. And we are current owners of a property down in Mars Hill. So you know, the the county, although you're 350 miles from us, is very near and dear to our hearts. With that said, for your fire chief Darrell, just a few comparison notes for between what you're seeing and what we are. Our call volume right now, as far as ambulance wise, is off about 40%. Therefore, our revenue is off from that about 40%. We run three ambulances here in town at any given time. One is always frontline, the other one is backup, and the third one is there in case. And we rotate. You guys said earlier, how many cases do you have in the county right now?
Got to unmute Darrell.
Six. It's six.
Okay. So total cases for us in town right now is between eight and 11. The total amount confirmed in New Hampshire right now is 2588. Total amount recovered is 1,019. So we're running about 1,200 active cases right now. 86 deaths overall. Of that 86, 73% of that is nursing homes, long, short term care, long term care. You know, so it's, it's definitely something that we fortunately in New Hampshire have managed to kind of dodge the bullet of being so close to Massachusetts. The point was brought up earlier that, you know, they want to be very careful not to open the state up too quick, have people come up from down down south, down here. You know, my wife and I stopped going up there this year at basically the end of February because of the fact that we didn't want to transmit, you know, possibility of us having it, not knowing it and going up there, knowing the limitations you guys have as far as your overall healthcare, you know, and a lot of people honored that as well. I saw a huge hit in your snowmobiling industry. And I felt really bad about that. It, I think the measures we're doing down here in New Hampshire right now, and I don't want to dominate too much of the conversation, but just trying to give you guys an idea. The governor and the legislature today discussed how we're going to reopen our beaches. And the first thing they did was they discussed, you know, the easiest way to cut the amount of people at the beach by 50% is to block off 50% of the parking. So, you know, they're closing parking lots, they're opening areas up to open air so that, you know, you know, people can actually get out and walk and not have to bump into each other. So, you know, that's maybe an idea for your hotels up there, you know, block 50% of the rooms. It would at least get people into your hotels. But just, you know, like I said, I'm very pleased with the way this has worked out. I'm glad Kevin and I, we've known each other for almost 30 years. So we discussed the possibility of this a couple of years ago. We talked about getting our two fire departments together because our fire department runs the ambulance service. You guys just just started that within two years ago. So I think it's, I think it's a great marriage. I think we can learn a lot from each other.
And Darrell, I know you're listening in, Darrell, but you got to unmute your mic there if you want to talk to us.
I didn't really want to talk. No, but just quickly, I would like to reach out to the fire chief and compare what we do with what they do. But just in real quickly, we run, we started in 2017 with two ambulances. We're now running four ambulances and those ambulances actually could all be going out the door. We're looking at about 2,400 runs a year now. We do cover eight other or seven other communities as well as our own.
Yeah.
It's a busy department. And we did receive from the CARES Act right around $25,000 last week. And so, you know, we're fairly similar, but we found out fairly quickly in in the end of 2019 that we needed four ambulances to actually cover the communities that we have and serve. And our call volume slowed down in April, but like for a three week period. And then it came right out of it and we're back up to running 200 plus calls a month. So from a financial standpoint, we were actually above our projections. And so if we continue where we're going, I think we are far enough ahead that we're going to be able to meet our projections. But I mean, we won't know until, you know, we get through May and June to see what that actually happens. But our fingers are crossed that we're going to be able to carry our revenue budget.
Darrell, Darrell, have you been able to speak with anybody at Epping yet? Have you reached out yet?
I have not reached out, no. No.
Go ahead, Bob.
Sorry, Kev. Our chief actually was going to reach out to you. There was a particular day, he was actually going to reach out to you and kind of like bounce some ideas around. And he, at that particular juncture, became our emergency management director and handed down the baton to our assistant chief, who is now our acting chief. So and we are lucky in that our assistant chief was a town in, I mean, a chief in an adjacent town to us for 10 years. So, you know, he's well qualified and, you know, we hit the ground running on all respects in this. We haven't had any issues as far as the operations town wise, fire department and police. So we're doing okay.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about 2018 numbers for just 20 seconds, but our fire department is roughly, I think, 11% of our total budget and our police department's about 9% of our total budget and on the municipal side. And our rec center budget is around 7% of our total budget. So these are the types of things that you guys can look, work with. And, you know, if maybe Martin will issue an email with all the department heads and their direct email contacts, get that over to Mr. Dodge and he can run that down to his departments. And we want to roll this forward.
Martin already said that to me and it's been sent out to the department heads here. So it's gone out. So thanks for that, Martin.
You're welcome.
So maybe Greg, what you might want to do is send your information back up to us and, you know, if we want to take the initiative, we'll do that.
I believe I did that, if not I will. And I will send the Prescott list out to the department heads once again, just make sure they have it.
Yep. I know that it's, the sister city arrangements not necessarily on top of everybody's mind when watching CNN at night.
Right, right.
If people, if people do have some things or some questions and stuff, they should at least have that in their emails so that they can walk this back and forth. And Galen Wibley is our, he's on with us this evening and if he would unmute for a second, he can add some, some things about economic development to it.
I hate to break in for a second, but you know, my current twice-a-day endeavor here, if it's at the end of the meeting, if you'll forgive me, I've got to run up to the airport.
Go ahead. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Galen, you want to, you want to chime in for a second? We've got about, we've got like just the manager's report and announcements and we're done, so.
Absolutely. So for economic development, our budget is approximately 164,000. We have three employees that also do co-enforcement and health for the city of Prescott. We are currently undertaking a downtown tax increment financing district. That's what's taking the bulk of our time up right now, trying to promote economic revitalization of our downtown area. So that's where we're at right now. And we're also finalizing our 2019 comprehensive plan as well. In other news, for economic development, we are continually trying to help our businesses locally, understanding the governor's rephasing efforts. So there is a new chief, chief of our social media that we redesigned. And then we also have been working on also just helping businesses know what these regulations are for the social distancing factors for their customers. So we are doing all that on top of also doing a business inventory list of all of our businesses. I was hoping that that list would be completed at this point so we could start doing economic assessment of what we've experienced for COVID-19. But that list has not been finalized yet, but it's still in the works. So that's just a brief rundown of what we're doing with the department.
Anybody got any questions from Epping about to Galen while he's on the line? All right. Thank you all gentlemen for the candidness and I hope that we can continue this moving forward. And the next item is our management report from our city manager, Martin.
Thanks, Chairman. Just a few things that we've been working on just to keep council prized up. We have tried to do a lot of things to give people hope and to provide activities for people. So just a handful of those things that we're looking at is that the virtual wars that Kim Smith has put together is live. I believe it's 1,300 hits you've had so far. Excellent job, Kim, on putting that together, really creative. Galen didn't mention this, and I want to mention this to everyone else, Farmers Market that we are, it is going to open, the group is really interested, May, end of May, May 22nd, like when we'll start opening that up. Parks are ready to open. So far, when I go out biking around over, over the weekend and in the afternoon, I am seeing a lot of people properly going to the park, social distancing, seeing a lot of people fish down at Arnold Brook. Happy to see families going out and getting outside the house. So I do think that's something that the city can, can help with at this point. My hats off to the rec, the rec department and Chris for getting those parks ready for people to use. The departments have done an excellent job in preparing for reopening. And again, the rec department has done a lot with putting epoxy glass up. So we are looking at doing some, opening some offices here in the near future. There's some that still, obviously we're going to have to take a little bit more time and take a look at, but City Hall is one that I'm focusing on that is incredibly, is incredibly busy and there's a lot of essential things that people are looking for in there. Received a generous donation to the library and I'll see some details of that, maybe for a later meeting, but it's good to see donations continue to roll in. We talked a little bit about the tax commitment in the trials and tribulations before ready to commit, but through the department head call today, talking with Louis, it's something that we're going to, Brad and I are going to continue working on the finances and be ready to work with Louis when that time comes. Daryl didn't mention this, but we got the two ambulances from Pennsylvania, they're in our base. So thanks to Counselor Seer for looking at some delivery options. That was very helpful. The last thing I have is I do have another drug forfeiture that came in after we printed the budget. This one is not a large one. It's for a defendant named Jack Williams. And it was, again, related to drug offenses. One was for $125 and the other one was for $115. So that just, that just came in. So I was wondering if, if that could be approved so we can get that money in. Thank you. And again, my hats off to, to thank you for the counselor, for all your support and thanks to all the department heads for putting, putting the support together for this. I appreciate it.
Scott, I see you there patiently looking at this and I'm really curious, have you got anything else to say about the EAS subsidy or the DOT? If you want to unmute, tell us anything. Mr. Wardwell?
Essentially, I think, I think one of the things that's kind of delaying the decision is there's some, some real, I guess, apprehension about what is happening inside the airline industry. Silver especially has, in their communications with US DOT for exemptions, flights that they don't want to operate in Florida. I mean, they're, they're using language like they're in dire need and so Silver has some real questions. I mean, United, I really don't think that the federal government's going to allow one of the three remaining legacy carriers go under. So I think US DOT is trying to be really careful that they don't make a decision and then something blows up a month or two down the road.
So no decision and no timeline yet as to when we might know?
No. And actually, actually today, I was looking at the other EAS airports that their current contracts end June 30th, and none of those have been selected either.
Any comments or about the, we moved from Newark being our primary airport destination to Dulles about, what, three weeks ago? Any comments, good, bad or indifferent on that?
Well, I think it was something that, that was welcomed by the community, given that New York City was the epicenter of the COVID-19. But as you know, Dulles is the hub we've been trying to get to, really for quite some time. It's the 12th, has the 12th best on time record of the Big 30 airports, significantly better on time than Boston, the New York metro airports and also Philadelphia. I, you know, no guarantees, but I think unless things change significantly, I think we end up staying in Dulles.
Two thumbs up for me, I'm sure the flying public would agree. So I thank you, sir, for the update tonight, letting me put you on the spot. I appreciate you hanging in there, I want to give you the opportunity to speak, so. Sonia, you're the only one that hasn't spoke yet, would you, you got anything you want to add for us?
That's really unusual that I haven't spoken yet a lot. But if you insist, I'll take the next hour to discuss the library in its entirety. I just wanted to let you know that Martin and I are looking at a phased reopening plan. Couple of challenges that present themselves is the population or a portion of the population that we serve is not going to be very, shall we say, compliant or cooperative for social distancing and that sort of thing. So we're looking for ways to encourage cooperation and to open safely. The, the public is clamoring for not only books, but for our passport services and our fingerprinting services. So to stop those has been a major inconvenience, especially fingerprinting. And with the no travel sort of cautionary stuff, that, that, that's creating a problem for our citizens. So I want to restore that as soon as possible. And for the folks from Epping, you have a rockin' little library and I can't wait to pick your librarians' brain because I think they're doing some good programming and I'm impressed by what I see. So thanks for that opportunity. I think that's a, that's a pretty cool thing.
Thank you.
Adam, you got a comment there, Adam?
Yes, I was saying, thank you so much. We'll pass it on to our librarian. I'm sure that he would love to, our director, he'd love to pick your brain as well. Already I'm thinking fingerprint and passport at the library? That's, that's pretty cool.
Yeah, they've, they've tried to, they've done that as a great opportunity, it's a revenue opportunity. It's a little more personal service that the librarians have as opposed to going down to your local post office and dealing with those government employees. I think our city staff does a tremendous job making people feel welcome and at home and it's a great resource. And unfortunately, it's been closed and it's one of the casualties of COVID-19. So we're looking forward to seeing if we can assist Sonia in, in CDC Maine's guidance to get that reopened.
Oh, absolutely. A phased reopening for the library would be, has just jumped on to my priority list up there. Thank you.
All right. I think that, I don't think I've left anybody out. If, if anybody wants to comment or anything and stuff, there, put your hands up. Yes, sir. Mr. Dodge?
I just want to thank the chairman and your city manager for the invite tonight. It was great to be in on this meeting and see what our counterparts do up in Maine. So thank you so much for the invite. It was very informative, I learned a lot and as Adam did, I took a lot of notes as well. So thank you.
Yeah, as I said, as Bob said earlier and stuff, it was a dream he and I had many years ago and we weren't, Bob was on the fire department and doing other things and he was a selectman and I was just a newbie on this thing three years ago. And when I got the opportunity to be chairman, it was one of the things that I asked my councilman to support me on. And I think initially there was a lot of, not skepticism, but just like, why are we doing this? And now I think everybody's really jumped on and I have 100% support of my, my peers and, and we really come forward to seeing this continue, guys, and hope that this, we know that it's going to be staff work, but anytime that Adam and I or Bob and my counterpart, Mike Chassie, who's not here tonight, can converse with you folks. You know, maybe we'll get in on a Zoom meeting with you guys, but someday I'll get down to New Hampshire and sit in on one of your meetings as well. I'd look forward to that.
Your room is waiting for you.
And we're looking forward to attending one of your meetings in, live, in person.
Yeah, that'd be great, Adam. You know, and in the near future, we'll, we'll definitely be able to do that. So for announcements for tonight, this evening, we still have board openings and committee openings. So if anyone in Prescott has any interest in joining a board or committee, please see the city clerk or apply online at prescottme.gov. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Prescott City Councils on Wednesday, June 3rd at 6:00 PM. And we're projecting that that will be a live meeting at city council chambers pending approval and guidance from CDC. My understanding is that June 1, that we can go to 50 people in a meeting. That's still up in the air, but that's the plan. So if we can maintain six-foot spacing, social distancing, masks may be required for people in attendance, but that's not firmed up yet. So that is the guidance we've got right now for June 3rd next meeting. Anybody that, any councilman that doesn't feel that that's a safe opportunity is welcome to join us via Zoom and I'm sure Galen and Martin will put that together for us. Also want to remind everybody that Mother's Day is this Sunday, May 10th, so be nice to your mom and we'd like to wish all the moms a happy Mother's Day. Is there any other announcements for this evening?
Evan?
Yes, Randy?
Did we get a motion on the drug forfeiture funds?
Good, thank you.
If so, I would like to move that we accept the drug forfeiture funds.
Can I hear a motion to adjourn?
I would like to second.
Thank you, Jeff. Motion by Randy, seconded by Jeff to include the forfeiture funds into our city revenues. All those, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor would be Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Green? He's not here. Mr. Seer?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Willett?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes, the motion is 5-0, we still have a quorum, so motion carries. Martin, I'll be down or you can drop those papers by for me to sign, I guess.
Certainly, I'll be in touch.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no other business in front of us this evening, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I would move we adjourn.
I thank you. And there's a second by Jeff. All those in favor, just say aye.
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 Thank you all.
Have a good evening, guys, and thanks to Epping counterparts again for joining us. Yes, thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Good night, everyone.